All right, hey, welcome, everybody. I'm going to call to order a meeting of the Board of Selectmen for February 10, 2020. I'm going to invite, I see we have some outstanding young Boy Scouts here tonight, so I'm going to invite you guys up to the middle here to lead us all in the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you wouldn't mind, and then we'll find out why you're here afterwards, but...
(laughter)
(inaudible)
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 Well, thank you, gentlemen. Now, who wants to be a spokesman for the group and tell us, go to the podium and tell us why you're here?
(laughter)
Go right up to the podium there, speak nice and loud, and tell us your name and tell us why you guys are here tonight.
Um, my, my name is Cole Giles, and we are here because we're trying to earn the citizenship and the Community Merit Badge.
Thank you for being here. Okay. So, tonight, on the agenda, our first item will be public comment, so I'll ask if anybody has public comment, please come up to the podium, give us your name and address, and there'll be a sign-in sheet there. We'd like you to also sign that in for the record, so...
There's no sign-in sheet.
There is no sign-in sheet. We're working on getting the sign-in sheet there.
Okay, I'll cite it before I leave. Okay. There's no poll. My name is Karen Laurel, and I'm at 591 Massachusetts Avenue, and I'm very happy with the poll decision, so, but I understand they're going to start the safety reviews by the town of North Andover any day now. And Phil, you promised us back in November of 2017 (laugh) that once that happened, we would be able to be involved. I've done a lot of the analysis already, and I have a lot of experience. I, when I was a National Science Foundation Fellow, I trained at the National Science, what is it, Center of Excellence in Modeling. So, and I've worked in traffic forensics and traffic behavioral biometrics, so I have a lot of experience in that area. It was for the Army and for the Air Force and for DHS. Little different application, but all the principles are the same, okay? So I, I hope that, I know the Seaweed's, Vernon's here tonight, they would also like to be involved, and there's probably other people that are very concerned who will also want to be involved. So I'm just hoping, I'm asking here, if we can keep your promise from many years ago.
I think that we've involved you in the process the whole time, and I think that we're going to continue to do that. Why wouldn't we? But I don't, I don't want to make a promise on behalf of the board.
Okay, no, this is, this is specifically on the, on the safety. This is specifically on the safety, and way back when, they were supposed to do a safety analysis that, according to the Freedom of Information Act at MassDOT, has yet to occur. So, um, but it appears that something is going to be done through the town of North Andover, starting any day now.[487.21][487.21](laugh) I understand from John Burgazy that you're bringing a consulting group in to do something along those lines. I don't know if it's fully defined what it's going to be.
Well, our next meeting will have an update. Thank you for your comments.
Okay, thank you.
Any other public comment? Yes, sir.
(inaudible)
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, how are you? David Turisi, 67, Salazarid Road, also Chairman of the School Committee. I just came here really just to say thank you, to you, Tom, Madam Manager, Melissa Murphy Rodriguez. I just want to say, the School Committee, we adopted our budget last Thursday. We're thrilled that you are supporting us in that endeavor. I know, you know, the last four or five months are new to you, but the back and forth we've had over the last several months was really appreciated by myself and my board and Dr. Gilligan as well. I know I've had some conversations with all of you, most of you, some spirited conversations, but I just want to say thank God for the kids in North Andover. Really, it means a lot to all of us. It's the largest budget increase we've had, you know, I've been on for five, six years now, and I can't say how thrilled we all are, so I appreciate you all working hard to help us out on that, and I look forward to working you in the future as well. So, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Any other public comment? Going once, going twice. All right, well, thank you for your comments tonight. So next on the agenda is one of, on the agenda, I'm sorry, I'm rushing here, is one of our favorite things that we love to do here is swearing in, and in this case, tonight, we're going to be swearing in a new sergeant on the North Andover Police Department. So I will turn it over to Trudy. You're going to be taking it from here, and then, and I believe the Chief is going to be saying a few words. The Chief, you want to go first? Yeah, absolutely.
(inaudible) thank you very much. We had two great candidates for the position of Sergeant, and both candidates were outstanding. Sergeant Brendan James was given the nod. What he brings is five years of experience to the Police Department. He's one of the, one of our go-tos when we need stuff done. He's very involved in training, both defensive tactics, firearms, TASER training, giving back to the department, keeping everyone certified, updated, and really just a good heads-up officer. So, he's going to make a great addition to the Sergeant staff, and we're looking forward to working with him.
Could you please raise your right hand? Do you, Brendan James, solemnly swear that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and you will support the Constitution thereof? So help you God.
I do.
Do you solemnly swear that you will obey the lawful orders of all your superior officers? So help you God.
I do.
Do you solemnly swear and affirm that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all duties incumbent on you in the office to which you have been appointed according to the best of your abilities and understanding, agreeably to the requirements of the Constitution, the laws of the Commonwealth, and the rules provided in accordance with the law of the government, of the correctional institutions, of the Commonwealth? So help you God.
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
If I could just get you to sign my book?
Congratulations. Thank you.
If you'll just sign right here, I'll do the rest.
(applause)
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 (inaudible)
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 (applause)
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 (inaudible)
Congratulations.
And thank you for your service and for your continued service to the town of North Andover, we really appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
(inaudible)
Absolutely.
(inaudible)
I think that's, I've been doing this a while, I think that's the first child that's done the pinning.
(laugh)
(inaudible)
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 Great, thank you.
So I know traditionally, the officers may file out at this time, so if you'd like to take this opportunity, we will not look down upon you for doing so.
You won't hurt our feelings.
Thank you, guys, for coming tonight, and ladies, thank you for coming tonight.
Great job.
Good job.
Good job, buddy.
Thank you.
Okay, so you guys are going to get your money's worth tonight.
More ways than one.
Yeah, you're going to earn that badge tonight, you'll probably earn a finance badge tonight as well, because we're going to review, so, right now, we're going to review the town budget, which is one of the most important items that we do here at the, in the Board of Selectmen, is to review and approve the town budget, and then the town approves it. So, our town manager is going to give us a presentation on our town budget, so I hope you enjoy it. And, and, and welcome to all the department heads, it's absolutely amazing to have you guys all in one room tonight, it's really a great honor to have everybody here. So, thank you all for coming.
(inaudible) Chair, Town Manager Melissa Murphy, I'm joined by Lynn Savage, our Finance Director, and all of our department heads. All right, so this is the fiscal year '21, Town Manager Recommended Budget. We're going to start by talking a little bit about our budget revenue, which isn't so different from what we presented to you back in December, but has some fairly significant changes just in property taxes. We are presenting a balanced budget within capacity, as turned by our forecasting exercises and additional information we've learned since then. This includes consideration of the advice of the Revenue and Fixed Cost Committee. Our property taxes are higher than originally projected due to certified new growth for fiscal year '20, as well as our new growth projections for fiscal year '21. So what we did was we really drilled down, meeting with the Planning Department, the Building Inspector, and exploring what we saw as coming on the books for fiscal year '21, things that had not yet already been accounted for, and were able to increase new growth through that mechanism. And so that's how we were able to really accomplish a lot of our budget goals this year. The $111 million number you're seeing under the '21 recommended amount, that does include transfers to stabilization accounts and funding of capital using free cash, which is a comprehensive number, it's not just for operating. So this is a chart showing you our 2021 revenue. As you can see, the majority of our revenue does come from property tax, about 72.5 percent, not shocking in a community such as ours. And as you will remember, we did go through pretty comprehensively what the rest of the revenue is made up of, local aid, intergovernmental transfers, local fees, like building permits and licensing, et cetera. So the revenues for the fiscal year '21 operating budget total $105 million, it's a 4.01 percent increase from last fiscal year. As I said, that does not include the free cash reserves and capital. The property taxes are estimated to grow by 4.5 percent, so about $3.6 million. Our local receipts are increasing by 4 percent, $436,000. Local aid per our policies and procedures is level funded, so what we do is we wait to get the Governor's budget, as you know, that can be into the next fiscal year, as this year, and we, so we keep things funded from the last year, which is good planning because you don't really know what's going to happen. And our operating transfers are actually decreasing, which I'll talk about a little bit more when we get to the Stevens Estate Enterprise Fund budget. So this is a summary of the fiscal year '21 budget expenditures. As you can see, this one includes all of the capital, all of the transfers to the, to the stabilization accounts, and is in line with our revenues for $111,217,162. This breaks down our 2021 expenses. The 50 percent that you're seeing there, the 48.3 percent for education, it's not really a true number because it's, the shared services are not included in that, or the employee benefits. It's probably more like about 68 percent of the actual full budget, but the actual just education costs are the 48.3. You can see debt's about 5 percent of our budget, which is what our policies call for. Benefits make up about 15 percent. Culture and Recreation, 1 percent. Support Services, 1.7. Public Works, about 5. Public Safety, 10 percent. The fiscal year '21 budget includes increases of 4.07 percent in departmental spending from fiscal year '20. The municipal departments are increasing by 4.5. Support Services by 1.22, and the education budget by 4.52. The general fund spending, including reserves, everything, is increasing by a total of 3.14 percent. The municipal budget is increasing by $967,000. The school budget is increasing by $2.3 million, and Support Services is increasing by only As you know, we did face a gap this year between the forecasted revenues and the requests from the call center, in particular, in particular, the schools, and working collaboratively, we were able to bridge that gap. And we're going to be working with the Superintendent and the School Committee moving forward to continue to identify what the potential needs are, and we're committed to exploring sustainable, realistic funding mechanisms for those needs. But this year, in order to bridge the gap, we did two initiatives. So we did the increased revenues through the new growth, like we talked about, and we really dug down in that new growth analysis, which helped a lot, but we also level-funded health insurance. And I'm going to get more into talking about the health insurance over my next couple of slides, and we'll talk about it then, but those were our, really are two initiatives. So as you know, for health insurance, the town joined the Group Insurance Commission in 2014. At that time, the town was self-insured, and appropriating $11,91,614 for health insurance each year. In fiscal year '21, so seven years later, we're recommending a health insurance budget of $10,732,951, which is pretty amazing, if you think about it, our health insurance is costing us less than it would have cost seven years ago. It's very impressive. And that is, including the 11 new employees that the school department have requested, and the 6 percent increase that the GIC is currently forecasting. So this is inclusive of all of that, and so I think that that's something the town should be really proud of, that you guys made that decision in '24. Additionally, this is the first time we've really had a true health insurance breakdown, so the Deputy Town Manager has been working endlessly over the last two weeks to complete a task I asked her to do, which was modeling out our health insurance. We could really understand who's on what plan, are they taking family plans and individual plans, how many employees from the schools, and how many employees from the town are on those plans, and what are the retirees costing. This way, we'll be able to better plan for our health insurance costs in the future, and we can closely watch open enrollment, look for trends, and really forecast what these costs are going to look like moving forward. This is exciting for me, because I'm a nerd, but, you know, we really, it's been a really good exercise, and I think it's going to help us have a lot more transparency in our budget. So the health insurance breakdown, as of today, the retiree health insurance is costing about $3 million. School employee health insurance, so active employees, is $5.6 million, and the town employees, active employees, is $2,090,000. And I should also add, that's only the part the town pays, right? So the employees are also paying as well, but this is the town's costs. So in the past year, the health insurance line item was over-budgeted, and that surplus was used each year to offset deficits and fund unknown emergencies. And it was funded that way intentionally. So when you went into the GIC in 2014, the thought was, we're going to see savings, let's save those savings and spread them out over many years, instead of having everybody kind of grab at them at once, which makes great sense. This year, what we did was we budgeted on this historical data, we created this full health insurance analysis today, finished it today after weeks, but what we're doing instead, poor Dee, who's worked so hard, I feel bad, she probably hasn't slept, but what we're doing now is, instead of leaving those excess funds sitting in that health insurance line item, we're going to put them into a finance reserve account. And that finance reserve account will serve that same purpose that the health insurance surplus was serving, snow and ice, deficits in the school budget, deficits in our budget, unknown emergencies, things we can't account for, that before we were saying, oh, good, we have an extra $2 million in health insurance, let's go there. Now, instead, we'll be able to go right to this account, it will be transparent, there'll be a process, and we'll be able to better account for it, and I think that's something that will be really positive moving forward. And so what happens when we want to use this finance reserve account is we actually have to go to the Finance Committee, explain to them what the need is, and they have to approve the transfer. So we also have our appropriations to reserves, and these are something that we see every year, and this is in line with our financial policies. So this year, we're transferring $413,000 to our capital stabilization account, $2,233 to the regular stabilization account, $75,000 to the OPEB trust, plus $66,000, which is the prepayment of liability for the 11 new employees proposed in the school budget. We're doing $550,000 in our overlay account, and if you remember, overlay is how we pay for our appellate tax board and other appeals of taxes, and so that money stays in that account until those cases have all been ended. And then, like we talked about in this last slide, we're going to be creating this finance reserve account, which is $1,566,000, and that's being funded from the general fund.
Did you know, talk about the prepayment of the liabilities for 11 new employees, that's a new process.
Yeah, so that's something that had come out, I believe, of your OPEB committee.
Right.
Moving forward, and it was a policy that I understood was important for people, that they wanted to see that moving forward, whenever we had new employees. We had one new employee last year on the town side, and we did it there, and we're trying to continue that commitment, and it's a good practice to make sure that we're really accounting for what our new employees actually cost.
It's a proactive approach to OPEB, which is great.
For our position, yes. So, thank you.
Thank you.
So this is an accounting of our full-time head count, and so you can see that this year, we're actually, we are requesting an additional .5, and I will get into what that is as we move forward. We haven't seen too much movement in the last few years, it's really been hovering around that 210 number, but this year, we're going to be at 211.97. And so this is, I don't want to be that .97 person, but (laugh) right, exactly, yeah. And so now, we're going to talk a little bit about our highlights and changes in the budget. Most of the budgets really are level-service, level-funded, minimal changes, but there's a few things that we're introducing this year, there are new initiatives, and I wanted to explain those to you. So in Human Resources, we are asking for increased funding for employee trainings, wellness, and recognition initiatives, and that's $6,000. So we've been doing a lot of these already over the last few months, a lot of the department heads can tell you, we've been doing, this week, trainings for doing evaluation, employee evaluations, figuring out what our forms will look like, getting department heads ready to do those evaluations. We had leadership training, we had the open meeting law training, and so we have a lot of new trainings that we're trying to come out with, but we also want to recognize people for the great things they're doing, and I think that that's a really important part of, of having a really respectful work for us, and so we're working towards that as well. We're consolidating the duties of two employees to one through attrition, and we'll be seeing savings of about $30,000 through that, which is very exciting, and that's in the Human Resources Department as well. In Community Development, we're asking for funding for digitalization of documents. We were going to be going forward with the Conservation Commission, so they have been digitalizing all of their current documents, but they have a lot of older documents that we would like to digitalize, so that people, when someone's buying a home, or potentially thinking about buying a home, they can look and say, oh, this is all of the current orders that are on this property, this is the history, and I think that that's really important for people, and it will be searchable. Oh, it will be searchable at home. Uh-oh, I lost my screen up there. Um, yo, oh, something's happening, because I didn't get to IT yet. (laugh)
That's what happens when I come to the meeting.
10,000 out. Yeah. He already yelled at it earlier, we'll give him a minute. All right, I'll keep talking, though, here we go. Also in Community Development, we're asking for the introduction of a part-time employee or a potential employee share, and that person would be a housing development specialist. Thank you, Chris.
Thanks, Chris.
So we have been talking to neighboring communities about sharing this position with them, a couple of our neighboring communities already have this person, and so I've been kind of nagging them and bugging them about, can we share with you, instead of bringing this person on our own? This position, to me, is really important, it does not have a benefit or OPEB impact, but we need to start implementing the recommendations from the Housing Production Plan and the Master Plan, and we need someone to really study our current housing, collect data, prepare reports, make comment on the housing we have coming forward, but also make sure that the affordable housing we have stays affordable, so it continues to count towards our SHI, while also thinking of new ways to get the housing we want where we want it. And I think that that's a really important goal for us, and with the census coming up, I just saw him come in, we're going to be kind of getting even further away from that 10 percent, and we need to have someone who's here constantly tracking that, telling us what it looks like, telling us if the 170 units go on an Avalon, that means we need 17 more units here, and just really being on top of that. And we've done a good job of doing that, just with the people that we have, but there's people out there who specialize in this, and I think it was a really important new initiative for us. And so that's one of the things we have moving forward. The Police Department has asked for an introduction of a therapy dog, so that dog would be used all throughout town, school, and nursing homes, et cetera, and would be, I think, a great new addition to the department. And so this outlines what those costs are. It's a stipend for the officer that would have the therapy dog, canine care costs of about $4,200, and then the one-time cost of the dog would be within this year's budget. And in Youth and Recreation, it's the addition of one part-time, not benefit-eligible administrative assistant for $18,000. So in the past, they have relied on the voluntarism of parents to work their front desk, but they've really become a business, they're very busy, and that's not working. And it's no slight to the parents who have been amazing, I know he's over there, and will continue to be there, I believe, on Fridays, right? But we need a little bit more stability in that department, and so we're asking for that there. And this might be a surprise for him, because originally I told him he had a cover $9,000 out of his revolving account, but we did manage, we did manage to pull it off, so. And then the Fire Department, we have the introduction of four new lieutenant positions, and so currently, we're working with both the Fire Department and the Police Department on graft, on crafting long-term staffing plans, five-year, long-term staffing plans, visions for the department, what do we want to look like, where do we want to be in five years, how have we been impacted by our new development, how has the additional housing impacted us? And you think about it, right? We've had one new position since 1999, our population has changed dramatically since then, and we need to modernize our public safety. Our population has changed dramatically since then and we need to modernize our public safety. And so we're working on that vision and we're working on the long term staffing plan. But this costs for four lieutenant positions. They're promotions only. No new positions, no new firefighters are a part of this year's plan. The plan would allow for an additional fire company line officers to enhance safety and provide an effective span of control at every incident. If you need more than that, we'll have to ask Chief McCarthy. But it will cost twenty two thousand dollars in salaries and seventy two thousand dollars in overtime. And that would include the night differential, longevity, holiday pay, everything. That's the whole thing. And the chief is really excited about this initiative. I think you don't really know what you don't have until you've had emergencies and you say, this is what we really could have used. And so he is really excited. The firefighters are really happy about this moving forward. And so I'm really excited to be able to support that. We're also doing a new thing in the fire and police budget where we're moving their IOD, which is their injuries on duty, pay out of their budgets and putting it in the benefit line item. What's happening now is if they have somebody who's out for a long time, it's really affecting their overtime budget, but also their salary line at the same time. And they have no flexibility. And so we're moving that so that they'll be able to better operate and not constantly have to be worried about their overtime and having enough people to man the stations. And so we're really excited about that new initiative as well. In public works, where there's not really any new initiatives, but we are doing a lot of consolidation. And it's all for efficiency. So we're consolidating the fuel to one budget. So what was happening was if you used gas, you were getting a bill that was created by DPW and then poor, poor, poor Lynn was then processing a check to send back to ourselves. Yeah, I mean, it was messy. And so we're going to have one fuel budget moving forward, which is great. We're still accounting for the fuel. We still have the fuel keys, but we're not going to be having this kind of administrative nightmare. And we're also consolidating all of the DPW salaries for payroll efficiency. So instead of seeing people who are in parks and grounds or in streets and highways, everyone's just going to be in one budget, all the salaries. So that's going to be really helpful for payroll. In information technology, we're increasing the funding for cybersecurity, which is a really big priority of the town. And we've continued to really take a lot of initiatives towards improving all of our systems. But it's a major issue for a lot of communities right now and staying on top of it is really important. And then we're also introducing ClearGov and FlashVote in this budget. So those are two software. ClearGov, which is about to, I think, actually roll out, we just finished uploading everything, is a budgeting transparency software. And maybe at the next meeting, I think we'll be ready by then. I can give you a demo of it. And FlashVote is a survey software that allows you to do statistically relevant surveys. The long term Stevens Estate Committee would like to move forward with a survey. They'd like to get statistically relevant data, which I think is a great goal. And so we're going to be working with them. They're actually letting us do a pilot, a free pilot to start. And so they're going to be rolling their survey out soon. So that's exciting. Just to get a little bit into the enterprise fund budgets. The sewer enterprise fund budget is going to be increasing by a hundred and seventy thousand dollars from fiscal year twenty. The majority of this increase is due to expected increases in the assessment from the Greater Lawrence Sanitary District. Sewer rates are forecasted to remain the same this year for the ninth consecutive year. But we do want to be realistic that a rate increase may be necessary in the future years as that assessment continues to increase. For the water enterprise fund budget, that is increasing by three hundred and fifty eight thousand nine hundred and fifty four dollars. The water rates will remain the same for the ninth consecutive year. We are implementing two new initiatives within this budget. The first one is a hydrant flushing program at a cost of two hundred and twenty five thousand dollars a year. This would be a system wide flushing, flow testing and hydraulic model update, seven hundred and fifty hydrants per year. And as you know, this is a matter of public safety. It's really a necessity. So it's not only important to make sure that our hydrants are operating correctly in a fire, but it also leads to improved water quality. Because you get kind of sediment and deposits within the pipes and we need to flush those out. So this is a very worthwhile project. We have about eleven hundred hydrants? About that? So it'll take us about two years to do the entire system. And then the second one is a one time cost and that is a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Been requested by the planning department to fund an update to the town lakes watershed plan. So the last time we updated that was nineteen eighty seven. It is a goal from the master plan. It's a one time cost. We think it's a very worthy cause and we'd like to move that forward this year as well.
Not raising sewer water rates as well, so that's awesome.
And then finally, the Stevens Estate Enterprise Fund budget. And this budget is actually decreasing from four hundred and ninety six thousand three hundred and eighty dollars to three hundred and sixty thousand one hundred and twenty nine dollars. We're removing the indirect costs. There was a reduction of one full time employee during fiscal year twenty. We're reducing the liquor license payments to the town, which we agreed to this year of twenty one hundred dollars. And we're not including any capital expenditures this year. We've been working closely with the town staff, the trustees and the long term advisory committee. And I feel like there's a lot of hope and optimism about the Stevens Estate right now. And I think the fiscal year twenty one will be very transformative. And we look forward to trying to continue to work toward solutions. And while the budget is decreasing in total, it's not a reduction in services. Since we're removing those indirect costs, we're actually adding ten thousand dollars for marketing and advertising and five thousand dollars in part time salaries. We have a vacancy in the part time event manager position and right now, that position is a little bit. They don't work set hours every week. They may work five hours one week and twenty five hours the next week. And my suggestion is if we have that person more stable in their hours, that person may be able to help bring business in as well. And so this is, it's a little bit tough because the revenues are down a little bit this year compared to the past few years. And it's kind of a chicken and egg thing. You know, do we continue to invest or do we pull back more? And I think it's one of those situations where we have to invest so that we can continue to bring business in and we can continue to be better. And so we're trying, we're trying to do that as responsibly as we can. If you look at the next slide, and I know it's kind of small. This is looking back sixteen through nineteen on the actuals and talking a little bit about fiscal year twenty and twenty one. And you can see that fiscal year seventeen was the first year that we started doing transfers to capital. And that was also the first year we started to show the deficits on our accounting sheets. And a lot of the conversations that I've had have been that if you took the capital out, the operating deficits would really be much less, right? And if you look at fiscal year nineteen, which is the last actual year we have, there still would have been an operating deficit of about twenty thousand dollars, but it wouldn't have been a hundred and thirty nine thousand dollars. And so trying to understand that and talk that through. The indirect costs and the capital costs are costs of running the facility. And I understand that, right? But I think that's where a lot of the disagreement has been in the revenues and the expenditures. And so that's just kind of the point that I'm trying to take there, make there. While we are removing the indirect costs this year to help the estate regain their stability, those indirect costs are costs of running the estate, right? Their health insurance, their costs of payroll, their costs of accounting and auditing. Those are real costs that are costs of the estate. And they should technically be included in future budgets if we plan to continue to run the facility as an enterprise fund. Because an enterprise fund is supposed to include all of those things. And so this year, we're really trying to step back, take away some of that burden and kind of reset. And so that's why I've taken them out this year. But I just want to be clear. So in fiscal year twenty, we built this budget last year, assuming four hundred and forty nine thousand dollars in revenues. And we assumed at that point, we were even going to use retained earnings to offset some of the costs. We were very realistic about that. But year to date, the town has collected, what we have in hand is a hundred and sixty six thousand one hundred and seventy nine dollars. And I understand there's additional bookings that have deposits included in that amount and will bring additional revenues as the year goes on. But in accounting, right, in your own bank account, you don't say, in three weeks, I'm going to get another check, so my bank account balance is this, right? You look at what you have today, what you can spend today. So we've been working, myself and Andrew Shapiro and the director, and we've increased rates effective January first, twenty twenty one, which is midway through twenty twenty one. And we're working with her on revenue making endeavors, including putting the catering out to bid, increasing the marketing amounts, working on a business plan. But I still feel like with all of that, I had to be very conservative in the creation of my fiscal year twenty one budget. Which is why I'm building that budget on the three hundred and sixty thousand dollar number and not on a larger number of coulds. I just had felt like that wasn't really anything further I could go than that three hundred and sixty thousand dollar number. And I think that three hundred and sixty thousand dollar number is probably pushing Lynn further than she's comfortable at this point. So I will tell you that the way that an enterprise fund works is that our budget has to be approved by the department of revenue. And we have to be able to show that we have plans in place to increase our revenues, right? And so if we don't get to this point, if we start getting into fiscal year twenty one and we're not seeing the revenues that we expect to get us to the three hundred and sixty thousand dollar number, we will have to cut the budget. And I just want to be clear about that. So while I'm confident and I'm excited about moving forward with the fiscal year twenty one budget that I'm recommending, I also want to be really realistic that if the revenues that we think we are going to receive don't come to fruition, we will see budget cuts in fiscal year twenty one mid year. And I'm committed to doing that if the revenues are not in place. Because we can't continue to use retained earnings to offset the operating. So I know that's not a super positive optimistic message, but I, what I'm, I'm excited to continue to work with the team on making the Stevens Estate a success. But I also want to be really realistic that we're going out a little bit on a limb here, creating this budget. And I won't hesitate to have to make cuts if I have to.
I understand the idea of taking out the transfer to capital to make this year work because this is a bridge year, so to speak, to get to hopefully a new vision or whatever the long term committee, you know, comes up with and that we might decide to do as a town. The plan would be to incorporate back in, I assume, a transfer to capital. I mean, I, that's like saying a homeowner doesn't save for capital improvements to their house or whatever. And I hate to see that go away. I get why you do it for this and I agree, it makes sense for this year. But I just feel it's important to add it, to know in our heads, we're going to add that back in for a long term planning.
There are two CPC articles that the Stevens Estate is putting forward. And additionally, we do have unspent money from last year that we're just starting to use, which is one of the reasons why we are comfortable moving forward without capital this year. They just started some work on the bathrooms that was from fiscal year twenty. And so, you know, it won't be that no work is happening, but you're a hundred percent right. The most, the most advantageous thing that could happen is that we start to build up retained earnings like we have in the water and sewer enterprise funds and we use those for capital moving forward, even if we end up using those for a bond payment for capital moving forward, right? And that's an ultimate goal. This year, my real focus is on how do we build sustainable revenues in order to continue to operate?
Yeah, I think this is great. But can we also, at what point can we see like maybe a three or a five year projection going out? So we have those goals in mind and so we know what our, and I don't ask for tonight, I'm not even asking for before town meeting, but at some point, it would be nice if we could see that, maybe a three year and a five year projection going forward. And just so we have some goals in mind, so we know what we're looking to try to achieve.
We can certainly work on that. So we have, it's on a slightly different schedule because of the way people schedule weddings, right? It is different. So, but we can certainly work on, we can work on trying to figure out, we can certainly forecast the expenditures. And we can work on, once we have those, figuring out what the revenues would need to be and then back into the rates that way. So we can certainly work on that. One of the things that we've really been talking a lot about, and it's great because Joanna is now here on Mondays, half a day. Yeah, we love it. It's been amazing. And like, we were, we were having a budget conversation on Monday and I had a question and she was here. So it's been really positive and we've really enjoyed having her here. And I think she's enjoyed being here. And so, is she smiling? Good, we're glad. See, it's like, I think the optimism about it is contagious when we're all together and talking about it and brainstorming. And so one of the things that we've been talking about is, you know, this is the business, right? And it's different than anything else. I mean, we run twenty businesses here, right? But this one's a little different than the rest of what we do. And so we have to rely a lot on Joanna on how to do it. And we want to work with her on creating a business plan because really, we should have one. And so, you know, and she's been very supportive and excited about working with us on it. So it's been a really good relationship.
Like a business plan with those revenue and expenditure projections.
But, yeah, so it's been great. And she did a revenue, she did a revenue change for January. And when Lynn and I went through, we were like, this is exactly what we needed. And she did a great job on it. So it's been, it's been really good. So we're excited.
Get into some, I'm curious like what the rate increases were and for how, you know, for what events or what times of year across the board or what, but we don't have to get into it in this meeting.
She's created two. We can certainly put it on the calendar. She's created the rate schedules. And they're, they're great. So we're happy to do that. So I think that's it on the Stevens Estate. And then just my thank you, I just want to thank everybody because it's been four months and they've been very supportive, not just during the budget, but all around, all the time. And I think I drove everyone crazy during the budget season, asking questions about office supplies and how many pencils do you buy? And I won't stop doing that. So don't think it's going to be better next year, but I was very thankful to everyone. And I also want to thank Lynn and Dee, who I've tortured nonstop pretty much for the last two weeks. So that's it. Thank you.
Yeah, and I, you know, I'd like to express my thanks too for all, everyone and to really to echo Chairman Terese's words about saying, you know, great job on finding a way to bring us to another town meeting with another consensus budget and providing additional funding for the schools for things that they really, really needed. So, I mean, just kudos to all the people, all the on the team. And thank you to all the department heads that are here tonight for all the contributions you made. I know you guys have to go through and sit and do a lot of work too to get to this point. So thank you for everybody and thank you all for being here tonight. Again, it's amazing that you're all here. I don't think we've ever had this before. So we really, really appreciate it. So any, I'm sorry, any other?
There was absolutely a feeling of camaraderie and everybody working together. And the people that, you know, we casually, how are things going? Things are going great. How's budget going? And you should be commended for that. You really have pulled, as well as Lynn and as well as Dee, you know, the, your people who support you in the budget season so much. But the words that I was hearing in the building were people were feeling good. And outside the building too, for those of you who don't work in.
I would echo my thanks to you and the school department and school committee for the collaborative work effort to get to being able to fund the request of the school department. I also just wanted to, well, first of all, great presentation. Thank you. I thought that you did a great job of explaining the changes. I appreciate that. And I just want to mention to the public as well, who might not, you know, they might just look at that document. The budget document is so detailed and I really appreciate the work that went into the goal setting portion of each department. So I really thank all the department heads for setting their FY twenty one goals of what they're going to do with that money. Because that's as important as what the money is, is what are they going to do with the money? And just a couple of comments, I would say, I noticed so many cross departmental goals that I really appreciated. I think collaboration is the key to success and I loved seeing that. There was a lot of things that I thought pointed toward ease of doing business with the town in the goals, which I really liked. There's a great cross section of goals that impact every age group in North Andover. From elder to teens to younger kids. So I love seeing that. And there were just a lot of forward thinking and forward planning and preparedness, which I think is very important as well. So I just really want to recognize the effort on those goals and to thank every department for putting the thought into those goals. I think they're very well done.
A month ago, yes. Which is great. And it was actually very, we learned how to do SMART goals as a group. And I think it was very helpful. We're trying to work towards achievable goals.
Noticeable difference. I pay attention to those goals ever since I've been sitting in the seat and I really, I really appreciated those goals.
And I also appreciate some of the new initiatives that you're bringing forward too, that, you know, I found that really interesting and looking forward to see how they all work out because they sound really good. So that was kind of also tying into Regina a little bit. It's good.
See it? I tweeted it out today. So you can also get it there.
Is it possible for someone decides to elaborate or expand upon them? Like, so for instance, I know that during the budget discussion, especially online, there were questions about just how we prioritize and allocate funding. And so I love the graphic where it shows, A, I think that the statistic about our fire department is an absolutely salient and important important piece of information for the public to acknowledge, especially given what we went through, the fact that in twenty years, we've added one position, literally one position to our department. And I think that everyone in this room agrees that we've had substantial growth and obviously substantial need, right? And especially with an aging population where we have our fire department. They're our first responders when it comes to medical issues, not just public safety. But just expanding specifically upon the town staffing slide, where we've grown from FY sixteen to FY twenty one, just what those new positions represent. Because I know I can think of specific positions, the addition of, you know, Deanna, for instance, in the value associated with that. But it's tough sometimes to look back and reflect on like, so what were those new positions? And I think oftentimes it's because we add a fraction of a position and those just end up adding up.
Flip and open, she had it all ready to go. That does portray that, but we certainly can put it in slide format, add it to this to make it a little bit easier to follow. Sometimes there's so much stuff in the book that it can be a little overwhelming, yeah. But yes, we can certainly put that in a slide, explain. But yes, we can certainly put that in a slide explaining, and so I will say the Chief McCarthy has been working since last week on slides for the finance committee, kind of talking about the calls for service, how the department has changed in the last 20 years, and why the need is what the need is today. And so, he's ready to present those. He had them ready for tonight, but I told me you didn't bring them, but he has them ready to present to the finance committee and to the town meeting, so he'll be ready to go.
For years, they've been asking for more senior people in the fire department, and so to let the public know why, and if I say it wrong, Bill, please, it's it's to have someone on the outside to call the firefighters out of the building when it becomes apparently too dangerous. And for years, the people making the decisions were also inside the building. So, for people who think that this is sort of a luxury, it is absolutely not, and nothing proved it more than the Columbia gas fires, that we need somebody who's sizing up the whole scene. Am I telling this correctly, Chief? And?
Oh, he's coming up.
Oh, maybe I didn't tell it correctly.
You did correct it, me today.
Is this on? Okay. So, currently, the way we operate is we have a chief, a deputy chief, two lieutenants that oversee 11 firefighters on each shift. When the deputy and I are not available to respond, which could be at nighttime on our weekends, we're leaving the fire department with two lieutenants. We've seen an increase of calls with in the last 10 years, we've had an increase of 22.4% of incidents that we respond to, 13.3% ambulance calls have increased. So, our goal is over this five-year period is to ultimately get a person in a car 24 hours a day, 365. This is a starting point for us. When I met with the new town manager, we had a discussion on where I think the fire department needs to be. This has been going on a long time with me. I've had this vision for a long time. I was one of those firefighters that was working house fires, and I didn't have a chief officer. And it's a difficult thing, and currently, the ladder truck operates with two firefighters. We have multiple times now that we're responding to incidents that are happening at the same time. Just this past week, we had a motor vehicle accident, entrapment, two people. It's a full response, right in front of the police station. Shortly after that, we had just trans we extricated the people from the car, a second accident came in for Waverly Road. Within seconds, a unresponsive female on Turnpike Street. So, the ladder truck responded to Turnpike Street with two firefighters. I freed up an engine to go down to the accident on Waverly Road. This is happening more and more. We're sending the ladder truck out without an officer on it. What this will do for us is it's going to give that ladder truck stability with an officer on it, because that is the piece where it has the most moving parts. If there's firefighters out, we have to replace those firefighters on that ladder truck, and it might come from people that work at the other station that are not normally on that that piece of equipment. By putting an officer on that piece, it's going to give us stability. In the event, the deputy and I are not available, and it happens. It's if I go grocery shopping in Middleton, I am not available immediately when that incident starts. Incident command starts as soon as they get on scene. So, for me to show up 10 or 15 minutes later, it's too late. You need that incident command beginning immediately. And what this will do is by having three officers available, one of them are more likely to be able to assume command, and the other two can stay with their companies. So, the way we run now is one of those two lieutenants has to take himself away from his crew, and he becomes the incident commander. So, again, the deputy and I are available as much as possible. I've been called out four times this this month, and I respond. But again, it's there's too many times where we leave the department with two officers, and we don't have that structure. So, this is what this plan does. It's 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 putting together something that at the end of this five years, hopefully, we can have that permanent structure, because again, we are going to continue to see calls for service. The town is growing, as we all know, and the ambulances are becoming more and busier. So, when those ambulances are on calls, that's four firefighters that are less are not available to respond to an incident of a fire, a motor vehicle accident, a hazmat situation. So, we're approaching 5,000 incidents per year. So, I I appreciate, you know, the town manager and deputy town manager and Lynn working with us to to, you know, develop this plan, and and hopefully, we can continue it going through. So, I hope that answers your question.
I think I got it both ways, I didn't.
Yeah. Yeah. And again, the incident command at the fire department is done. Somebody has to do it, whether it's the deputy was at the academy, and so I responded with the companies on those calls that day. When we're not there, one of those lieutenants has to take command, so it's not like somebody is norkaby overseeing the firefighters, but that span of control has reached a point where it's 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 over what what is recommended. So, by putting this third officer on on year one, it'll reduce that span of control and make the the fire scene safer for us, will be more effective, will be more efficient. So, okay. If I may add too, though, the the revenue, we're we're taking steps right now in order to assist the town in helping to finance items like this. So, right now, we're working on this on the grants. The AFG grant is out right now. We're looking to purchase power load stretches for the ambulances to hopefully reduce lifting injuries, less likely firefighters to be out on injury. It's a cost savings for our overtime. We've also established under the previous town manager, a reimbursement for hazmat situation spills. It's under Mass General Lodge 21E. I've been doing that now for four years as chief, and we've brought in $50,000 in revenue. The town now has a revolving account, so some of those dollars come back to the fire department. It helps us buy equipment, so it's less money I'm asking for equipment in my budget. We ask for the SAFE grant every year. It puts firefighters in in our schools. It puts firefighters with our elderly. We're not using overtime, we're using grants. And then finally, we have the CPA expenditure program, which is reimbursement for Medicare. It's money that's available. We just show what our cost is to basically run the ambulances. We do a report, and then the town gets reimbursements. We've been doing that for two years. We received $41,000 in 2018 and $37,000 last year, and we're waiting to see what we receive this year. So, we're we're thinking outside the box. We're trying to increase revenue. We're going to be coming in front of the board to to review and update our ambulance billing rates, which we're supposed to do with every five years. I think it needs to be done yearly, but the recommendation was five years, we're up for five years. We're looking with the increases, and this is not going to be increases to residents. This is going to be money that'll be coming from insurance companies that is basically being left on the table. We'd see an increase probably upwards of $100,000. So, there's things that we're doing. We're working with the town manager, Lynn Savage, Finance Director. We're trying to be creative on how we can accomplish the things that we want to do, but also help out with with some of the funding. So, thank you.
All of this really is a wonderful illustration of when people pay their taxes, what are you what are you getting? It's an investment in the community, an investment in services, and, you know, there's a beautiful illustration about how you we're getting as citizens here, a great return on our investment and incremental investment, and I hope people do look at this and and really understand, you know, how that translates into something that really makes our community safe, appealing, and really sustains us going forward, and that's why I think people love our town and want to be in our town. So, thank you for all of you for making that happen.
And I will offer the department heads, I know you guys work long days and many hours, so feel feel free to leave if you'd like, or if you'd like to stay for the remainder of the meeting, you're welcome to do so too. How are our Boy Scouts doing? Are Boy Scouts doing okay? Are they going to stay for a little bit longer? We've got an interesting poll hearing coming up. You might want to hang around for that.
Okay.
Well, thank you, guys.
How many of you are working towards your Eagle Scout? All of them. Two of my sons are Eagle Scout. Don't wait to the last minute. That's all I could.
Thanks for coming in, young gentlemen. We really appreciate you coming in. Good luck. Good luck in your badges.
It's really great to see all the department heads here.
Yeah. Thank you. Thanks. Thanks, Jean.
Our usual suspects.
All right, so we're going to continue on with the governmental reports. So, next up is a federal census update, and I believe we have a gentleman here from the federal census. You could introduce yourself and?
So, my name is Philip DiGatti. I'm a senior partnership specialist with the United States Census Bureau, also a resident of the? Town of North Andover. Yes. So, I live at 36 Brewster Street. Thank you very much. So, I'm here for two primary purposes. One is to provide the town with a briefing on the status of the 2020 census here in North Andover, and then second, to offer the board an opportunity to ask any questions and hopefully be able to provide you with some decent answers based on what you need to know. So, just to kind of get started, the 2020 census is coming. We're a little over a month away from when we're going to begin the process of counting the United States, and in terms of North Andover, there's a couple of things that the board should be aware of. First and foremost is that based off of response rates in 2010 and based off of response rates to American Community Surveys, where we survey individual tracks within the town on an occasional basis, we're able to estimate the low response score of every single community. Here in North Andover, the anticipated low response score is around 17%. What that means is that about 17% of the population of the town is at risk of not being counted. So, what will happen is we'll have a self-response period. Anyone who doesn't respond in the self-response period will be followed up in the non-response period, where we go and knock on people's doors. The way the knocking on doors works is if they're not at if they're not home or they refuse to answer, we don't get a response, so we have to keep trying. At some point, we run out of time or we run out of money, and so anyone who's in that non-response pool is a potential of not being counted. What that means for a community is that that individual is not a part of your count, which means when North Andover gets its share of federal aid and assistance, state aid and assistance, it is not the amount that the town should get. It is lower than it by the number of non-responses. With a rough non-response rate of about 17% here in the town, you're talking about missing about 5,000 people, just to kind of give you what those numbers look like. In terms of where that problem is geographically, the further north and the further west you go, the less the response rate. Census tracks and precinct tracks don't match, but we're talking about generally the areas of precincts one, precincts three, and precincts five, in terms of the part of North Andover where that concern is.
So, when you were saying north and west, you meant our town?
Yes.
Not?
No, we're talking strictly the town of North Andover.
You know that that? North and west in North Andover doesn't tend to?
Yeah, we can we can we can't get down to neighborhood, but we can get pretty focused on where we think those non-response rates are going to be.
One of the things that we notice, right, is when you look at the eight precincts in North Andover, precinct five has a noticeably smaller population, fewer people turn out to vote, fewer people just overall geographically, it's more dense, also happens to include a big chunk of Merrimack College. How are we working? So, first off, actually, is that 17% perhaps skewed because of the presence of a college in our community?
So, North Andover's numbers are influenced by the school. So, we we count everyone based on where they are located most of the time, which means college students are counted at their dorms. So, North Andover's population, according to the Census Bureau, includes the population of Merrimack College. Two, three things on that. First, it's important to note that we don't care about the address of the college, we care about the address of the dorm. So, where that boundary is between Andover and North Andover in the college, all the dorms that are in Andover proper are counted in Andover, all the dorms that are in North Andover proper are counted in North Andover, and they get as specific as inside the building, in the hallway, what side of the town is the door on. So, so it's it's not as huge of an impact in terms of percentage because there is a chunk of it in Andover. That said, Royal Crest across the street is increasingly by percentage becoming a college dorm, and that has increased the number of college students that are in the North Andover count. And it's not a coincidence that one of the harder to count precincts in North Andover is also where the college is located. Now, in terms of the count with the college, we partner with Merrimack, so we've already identified the individual we'll be working with. His name's David Golden. He's on the North Andover Complete Count Committee, which I'll talk about in a moment, and they'll provide paperwork on the residence of their dorms. So, the properties that are owned by the college and rented to the student body by the college are counted by the college. So, they're not a serious concern for your low count. Your your two more serious concerns are going to be Royal Crest, because it's not college property, so it's not being counted by the college, and then anywhere else that college students at Merrimack are choosing to live in an off-campus environment, because they have to respond on their own. And they that happens closer to the college than further away. So, that's the second part of that. In terms of the the count and the Complete Count Committee, so Merrimack College is sitting on the Complete Count Committees for the town of Andover and the town of North Andover. So, they've been actively working with both town governments, trying to ensure a complete count. That is more of a concern in this town than in Andover, primarily because of Royal Crest. So, the in order to ensure a complete count, what the Census Bureau has been doing is it's been building partnerships in the local community, trying to arrange to have the local community be the one who will message that community, and they're doing that for two reasons. First off, they're more likely to trust members of their board than they are going to a federal employee. They don't necessarily know who the federal employees are. We're lucky here in the sense that like, since I live in this town and I grew up in the town next door, I know a lot more about your community than most census employees do. But by and large, that knowledge is minimal compared to the knowledge of every single volunteer, elected official, appointed official in the town combined. So, we've been building partnerships all across the town in North Andover. At the moment, we have over 20 organizations and individuals and offices that have partnered with the Bureau to message the town of North Andover or to provide assistance to the town of North Andover. We've counted up little over 100 individual offers for assistance of some kind to your community, whether it be a church in the community reaching out to its members, whether it be the town clerk's office putting that message you might have seen on your local census forms, reminding everyone that the 2020 census is coming. And then the other piece of this partnership, we've been working with Lori for the most part, building a Complete Count Committee here in the town. That Complete Count Committee has one primary goal, and that is to identify the challenges that the town is facing in the 2020 census and then come up with solutions to that list of challenges. And a couple of things that we have already planned out at this point, residents of North Andover will be able to respond at the Public Library, they'll be able to respond at Senior Center. We're working on other locations that they will be able to respond at. We have a a beginning partnership with the schools, where we're looking at if there's any events at the schools that can be enumeration opportunities. So, a computer lab in the school will be made available to residents of the town who are coming in for a school purpose. So, those are the kind of things that we've been doing to ensure a complete count of North Andover, but that that will be limited by one reality, and that reality is the capacity of the town to ensure that its residents are aware of the census and have the opportunity and the ability to respond.
To Royal Crest, do you get...
Yes.
If it's allowable by law, I could see maybe there could be some confidentiality. But most of the big apartment complexes, they have leases. And in the lease, it determines how many occupants are there. I mean, when you're not getting a response, I would think you would hopefully get some assistance.
It's not allowed by law.
Ah, wow.
Unfortunately.
I said that at the beginning, but...
And the other part of it also is, is that whatever's on the lease is not necessarily the reality of what's inside that dorm or that apartment. Yeah, so it's...
But it's better than nothing.
It is better than nothing, but we can't count it.
You can't get it. Yeah.
Yeah. Unfortunately, the law won't allow us to do that. Individuals have to respond for themselves with the exception of a few certain circumstances. The nursing homes in North Andover will be able to respond on behalf of their residents. The dorms will be able to. Those are really the only options that are there. In terms of the several apartment complexes here in town, a relationship between the census, the Complete Count Committee, and that facility can help. So if that facility is willing to put a message on the census in bills for rent, if they're willing to leaflet their own building, put something on the doors. In terms of the ability to respond, the initial response options are online and by phone. So if those facilities have a private Wi-Fi that they can open up for a couple of days so that a resident who may not have internet access on their own would have that. So there's a lot of little things that we can do to ensure a complete count. So to respond to the census this time, for the first time ever, you'll be able to do it online and by phone. So on March 12th, we're going to send a letter to every livable address in North Andover that explains what the census is, the legal requirement for it, why it's important, the confidentiality reality of it, and then asks people to respond. They'll get a postcard a week later with a web link and a phone number. And on the back of it will be phone numbers for 12 other languages. So when that postcard goes out, and it's going to be put into the mail on or about March 16th, so your residents should have it somewhere between the 16th and the 24th, they need to be encouraged to go online and to respond or to pick up the phone and dial that number. If they absolutely don't want to do an electronic response and they want an old paper form, if they wait till the third week of April, they'll get it.
There'll be no phone calls to anybody's home either. So if any scammers are out there looking for information, there'll be no phone calls.
Correct. There's already a bunch of scams. Couple of things that you can note, and we've already spoken with the police department here in North Andover and the clerk's office. And we're going to be meeting with the reference team at the library because all of them are going to get these questions. We do not ask for a social security number. We do not ask for bank account information. We don't ask for money. We don't ask for donations or support on behalf of a political party. Any of those things are going to be a form of fraud. We are not going to call people initially. If there's an issue with your form, we may call as a response, follow-up to ask some questions. But at that point, we'll have most of your form filled out already. So that's just... Those are the kind of standard things we've been warning people about to ensure that you don't get caught in one of the scams.
Put that on the website.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for that update. Are there any questions from the board?
No, it's very interesting.
Thanks, Phil. We appreciate it.
Yeah, no problem.
I don't want to say we're looking forward to it, but hopefully we'll get it done and we'll raise that... Lower that 17%.
Well, think of it this way. North Andover's population is probably one of the largest increases by percentage in Essex County?
Housing that we have right now.
Yes. But if you think about it...
We're aware of it.
All of your public institutions are requesting funding and grant money based on 2010 numbers. So if you have nothing else to look forward to in 2021, you'll be requesting funds with a 10% or 15% increase on your population.
How does that one follow up? How does that 17% hit other communities? I mean, are we high, low? Respect the non-response rate.
So in terms... If you're comparing yourself to some of the cities in the area, I mean, Lawrence, the non-response rate is almost 40%. Methuen is well over 25%. If you're comparing yourself to the smaller towns, you're at a disadvantage. Boxford is under 10. Topsfield is under 10. Towns that are similar in size with similar demographic challenges to Andover, you're doing pretty good. It's a better non-response rate than in Andover. It is a worse response rate than in Sagis. It's a better response rate than in Redding. It's a worse response rate than in Tewksbury. So it kind of... You're right in the middle, would be the best way to put it.
It doesn't even rhyme a reason to...
There really isn't.
That's interesting.
And it's influenced by so many different factors that each town has its own unique reason that it exists, and that's one of the challenges to identifying it.
Interesting. Thank you.
Thanks, Phil. Appreciate it.
I do, too.
Okay, moving along. We have an update on the Senior Center.
Thank you. Nice job.
Okay, so I just wanted to show everyone this. Can you see it down there? All right, so we're rolling out some new project pages for all of our kind of construction and large projects we have going on. This is the first one we're using. Working on one for the Rec Plex. We already have one for the master plan for the downtown revitalization. We're going to be doing one on Amazon. But it's kind of just an informational page for people who are wondering what's happening with the Senior Center. And so it goes through the general project background, updates and next steps. So telling people that in January 2020, we put the IFB out for construction. We had our sub-bids due on February 13th. They will be due on February 13th. Our general bids are due on February 27th. We'll open those bids that day or after that. And then pending a successful town meeting appropriation for either additional funding for the project, as we've discussed, and to purchase the adjoining lot. And construction is expected to begin in June 2020. And construction is scheduled to be completed within 14 months from the time... The style of the construction. We broke down kind of an easy project timeline. So if somebody's wondering what's been happening, where is it going, what's next, they can easily go through that project timeline and figure that out. We also went through the history. So where has this project been so far? And when was money voted? How much money was voted? Where is the site? How did we get the site? What happened in the planning board, et cetera? It gives you a contact in case you have any questions about it. And then up here in this tab actually takes you to a list of, if it will open, let's say, documents all about the project. So if you wanted to see the building elevations, you can. But basically, anything that we think the public would be interested in knowing about, you know, the planning board's decisions, et cetera, are now all available right from our website, which is very exciting. And you can... If you're wondering how you get there, I can help you with that, too. You can follow it from many different sources, including kind of our town news. But if you go to our homepage and click on projects, we're trying to get all of our projects in this one area so you can see the downtown revitalization, the road and sidewalk storage, Route 125. And then the Senior Community Center is the highlight right now of the entire thing. You can connect with this page. At any time we post a new project, you can get updates via email, et cetera. So we're super excited to roll this out and wanted to share it with you and with everyone so that people can keep up to date on what's happening.
Because it's really... You know, for us, it makes our job so much easier when people ask what's going on and they really have all that information available and we can just point them to that website and really have it for ourselves as well. So, I mean, having the project timeline, all those documents out there and the history, it's really fantastic. Great job.
Thanks to Christine and Andrew, who I was like, oh, by the way, I'd like to have this done tomorrow. Yeah, and we're right on it and ready to go. And I learned things putting the page together, too. So it was a really positive experience. But we're planning on rolling these out for as many projects as we can, so.
And the transparencies are really critical because all of this ties into the master plan once again. And there's continuity in approach in the process. And I think that's important for people to see sometimes because we can kind of focus in on one project or one piece of the process and you can see the whole thing, so.
People are really thirsty for information because we posted this on Facebook on Thursday. And over the weekend, I screenshot the number of people who had clicked on the link just from Facebook, 90. And that was over the weekend on Saturday. And of course, sent it to everybody who was involved in making the page, being like, this works. 90 people clicked on the link and went and visited the website just from Facebook platform, never mind from an email they may have received with the news or from Twitter or any of our other resources. So that's pretty... For me, was pretty exciting, so. Thank you.
Okay. So next on the agenda, we have a public hearing, continued public hearing from National Grid and New England... I'm sorry. National Grid and New England Telephone for a joint poll petition on Mass Ave and Shurkington Road, continued from January 27th. So I need a motion to move into to continue that public hearing.
Move to continue the public hearing in accordance with General Laws, Chapter 166, Section 22, to receive comments regarding a joint poll petition from National Grid and Verizon, New England, to locate five polls on Massachusetts Ave.
I have a motion. And do I have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have... Continued public hearing. And David, you want to introduce yourself? I know we've met you many times, but just for the record.
I'm David Boushey, senior designer at National Grid, 1101 Turnpike Street, right here in North Andover. Here again for the third time. And a couple of weeks ago, we had six polls on the petition. Now we only have five. What's happened in the meantime, we had a very productive meeting where we were able to exclude one of the polls that we had previously asked to move. What you'll see today on the drawing that you've gotten is five and only five polls that we're going to be moving... We're asking to move approximately anywhere from five and a half to six and a half feet, as shown, in a northeast direction in a way that's away from Mass Ave. And this will accommodate for the DOT project that is going on and is about to take place in the next few months in the area. Hopefully, everything there is kind of a lot more clear than previous meetings. Apologize for anything that was confusing before. But I think we've come to a final, a good conclusion. And from what way we left it at the meeting a couple of days ago, it seemed like everybody was on board and happy. So if you please to pass it, it'd be great. If you want to speak with anyone else that's here, too, if they want to speak.
That was my feeling as well. People... Everybody came together, and I think it's a good plan.
Yep. Thank you for the work everyone did to find a very good solution for that. So I'll open... Are you... Any comments or questions from the board for Dave before we move to public comment? Okay, so I... We're in a public hearing, so we will accept any public comments that anyone would like to make on this petition. I know you've done it. Oh, well, you can... If you want to come up, you can come up or...
Yeah. I just want to say thank you. I'm the property owner of the poll that won't be moved, the newly not-to-be-moved poll, and I greatly appreciate that.
Any other public comments? Okay. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing of a joint poll petition of National Grid and Verizon, New England, to relocate five polls on Massachusetts Ave.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'm going to use my chairman's prerogative to move the actual vote from New Business for the... So we can move this along. So we have... On the New Business, we have a vote on the National Grid Verizon, New England Poll Petition. So I'm going to move that above the approval of the minutes. So I will hear a motion on that.
Move that the Board of Selectmen approve. Joint Poll Petition for National Grid and Verizon, New England, Petition Number 20754907 for Massachusetts Ave as presented.
Second.
Comments? Again, our thanks to National Grid, New England Telephone, Mass DOT for all coming together and working to get a very reasonable and good solution to a problem that we had and being, you know, considerate of the community. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we're good?
There we go.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming. Okay, so I'm going to jump back to approval of the minutes. So we had an open meeting on January 27th, 2020. We have the meeting minutes in our package. Do I have a motion?
Move that the Board of Selectmen approve the open session minutes of January 27th, 2020 as presented.
Second.
Comments, questions? Everyone is good with the way they were written? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Perfect. Okay. We also have another appointment to our Sustainability Committee, which is growing quite large, and that's a really... That's a good thing. So we have Leslie Kopinski. A motion to appoint Leslie to the Sustainability Committee. I will open it up to the subcommittee to make any comments or motions if they'd like.
Mr. Chairman. Leslie came in. She sat down with myself and Selectman Noblely. We had a great conversation with her about her interest in several different boards. We talked... Actually, I feel bad because it was several weeks ago. I think it may have even been before the first of the year. And we talked about her interest in the Sustainability Committee. And despite us not having appointed her yet, she's wasted no time getting involved. And so in my capacity as, I guess, the liaison to the Sustainability Committee, I've had a chance to sit in and see that it is a pretty robust group, and she's dove right in. So I enthusiastically motion to appoint her to fill a seat on the Sustainability Committee.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? There's no more. We'd like to thank all our volunteers in town, our new ones and our existing ones for all the work that they do and the time that they put in to help our town. It's such a great place to live. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next we have consent items. We have... On the consent items, a vote to designate the following board members. So all the members of these boards as municipal employees. And Town Manager, do you want to give us a quick overview, a brief description of what that's doing?
Sure. So the reason I'm suggesting this is that we typically have members of committees and commissions that serve on multiple committees or who serve as election workers or in the senior work program. And the only way to allow them to do that is to make them special municipal employees. And so these were some committees and commissions that either had been created and not made special municipal employees in the past or just never were and should be, so.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Any further discussion, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. So I'll hear a motion to move into licensing.
A motion to move to open meeting of North Andover Licensing Commission.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the first item we have is a request of Sue Park on behalf of the Andover, North Andover YMCA for a one-day entertainment license at Drummond Field. I think we heard this request already for the street closure. So this is just the entertainment license for the collection point after the race where she'll be giving out bananas and whatnot. You know what I mean? Post-race stuff.
Water, maybe.
You know, potassium and water. Yeah. So there's been no... There's no concerns with the application. I think it seems pretty straightforward.
So I'll move that the Board of Selectmen acting as licensing commissioners approve the request of Sue Park for a one-day entertainment license at Drummond Field on May 31st, 2020 from 8:00 a.m. till noon.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And the next item is a request... Sorry. Request of 1801 Turnpike Street Operations doing business at Sutton Hill Center for a permit for storage and use of LP gas in above ground tanks. Do we have to... We're having a public hearing?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, I didn't realize that, so...
See, the motion to open a public hearing.
Yes, I need a motion to open a public hearing, so...
Move to open a public hearing in accordance with General Laws, Chapter 148, Section 13, to receive comments regarding a license application from 1801 Turnpike Street Operations LLC for four 1,000-gallon above-ground storage tanks at 1801 Turnpike Street.
All right, we're in a public hearing. We have no one, are you going to comment on this, Dan?
Well, I'll second his motion.
Oh, sorry. Okay, motion mode and seconded. All in favor? Aye. Okay, public hearing. Any comment, gentlemen? This was advertised as it should be in the Eagle Tribune, so...
So, I'm sorry, what is 1801 Turnpike Street? Is that a gas station?
It's Sutton Hill Nursing Home.
A Sutton Hill Nursing Home.
They already have these tanks. It was just, we were, they were made aware that they actually needed a license for them. But, they've been there for some time, so this is nothing really new. It's more just getting them in compliance. There's no concerns from the town departments that way. We see it all the time, especially with the Hampshire, like, hot days, type of heat.
So...
So, manager, I'll move to close the public hearing in accordance with General Laws, Chapter 148, Section 13, to receive comments regarding a license application for 1801 Turnpike Street Operations LLC for four 1,000-gallon above-ground storage tanks at 1801 Turnpike Street.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay. So, this seems pretty straightforward to me. I don't have an issue with it. Does anyone else have a comment or discussion point around it?
Move approval.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay.
I mean, I move to close the meeting of the North Andover Licensing Commission.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Great.
Okay, so, we'll move through, we have no old business, so we will move directly to the Town Manager's Report.
So, really, that's the vacancy, except that we have made an offer and had it accepted to the assistant town accountant, which is exciting. And the only other thing I have is that the town has been awarded the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Grant, $35,000, so we can begin that work, which is really exciting. And part of that work is also updating our Hazard Mitigation Plan. And so, we'll begin that, and then we'll actually be eligible for a lot of grants that go along with that process. So, we're getting started on that now. That was announced this week. And that's it for me.
Short and sweet.
Budget, budget, budget.
Yes, but informative. Okay, next we'll have Selectmen Updates/Comments. So, no particular order? Anybody that wants to make a comment?
Well, congratulations. I hear that you have a new son that has joined the family.
A new son, why? Yes, I do. So, yeah, we're very excited. Had a beautiful wedding over the weekend, and it was very nice. We really enjoyed it.
And he and a group of locals participated in a fun dance at the wedding. I didn't go, but I saw the pictures, so...
It was a good time.
All good stuff.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
We'll leave it at that.
Thank you.
I believe, I believe the videos are out there, but we'll leave it on that.
Oh, yeah, there they are. Facebook, anyone?
It's great. Congratulations to you and the family.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anyone else?
I don't have any comments.
Okay, our next meeting will be Monday, February 24th, 2020. Thank you all tonight for coming and being here and participating. So, I'll hear a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned.